Welcome to our December 19th, 2023 City Council Meeting. It is 7:01 PM. Meeting is now in session. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Samuel Martinez from Amazing Love Ministries, and I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise.
Thank you, Mayor. Heavenly Fathers, we gather here this evening. We thank you for the freedoms that we so richly enjoy in our country. And Father, we ask that you help us to always remember the sacrifice of our servicemen and women that have given their lives, given their service, that we may enjoy these freedoms that we have. And Father, we remember the words of King Solomon, who said that unless the Lord built the house, they labor in vain who built it. And it was Ben Franklin himself that said that it is God that governs in the affairs of men. So, Father, we ask that you guide us, that you lead us. We need your help and we need your assistance. Give wisdom to our mayor, City Council, our Chief of Police, our City Manager, and all those that are in authority in this city. And Father, we pray for the blessing of God upon all of the residents of our city. Be there any individual, any family that is going through crisis right now, Father. During this holiday season, we pray for their comfort. Perhaps they've lost a loved one, they've lost employment, they've had financial lack. We pray, Father, for them, that they be blessed in every area of their lives. Now, Father, protect our soldiers around the world. Protect all our police officers, Father. And Father, we thank you for the guidance, once again, of your precious Holy Spirit. God bless America and God bless our great city of West Covina. In Jesus' name. Amen.
If we could remove all hats, put your right hands over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Assistant City Clerk, roll call, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilman Cantos.
Here.
Councilwoman Diaz.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wu.
Yep.
Mayor Calderon Tabatabai.
Present.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado is absent this evening. Thank you.
City Attorney, is there anything to be reported out of closed session?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Before we start the meeting, I just wanted to ask my council if it's okay that we move the City Manager Report before public comment?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so we are moving on to presentations. Our first presentation is we have a certificate recognizing Brian Gutierrez for the Centennial Toy Drive. Acting City Manager Morales.
Yes, unfortunately, our Commissioner Chair Brian Gutierrez will not be able to receive the certificate in person. He was deployed by his job, with his job for FEMA to the Arizona border and won't be able to attend tonight.
Okay, well, it was a fantastic toy drive. I just want to say, the city has, and the organizations in the city have done a wonderful job. We had Shop With A Cop. I know One in All Church, several church organizations have had toy drives. Our fire department, the community has really come together to make sure every child has a wonderful Christmas. And the toy drive that we had, Commissioner Gutierrez and Councilwoman Lopez Viado and all those organizations was a wonderful event. So hopefully, we get him that certificate. Okay, so moving on, we have a presentation by Acting Chief Tony Cortina on traffic safety. Now, I believe, is Acting Chief Cortina going to join us tonight to provide an update on traffic safety in the city? Fantastic, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, City Staff, and members of the community. An important function of the police department is to educate the community about traffic safety. During the holiday season, there are more people out in the streets, traffic is heavier, and due to the increased celebration, there are more DUI-related incidents as well. We've already put out some traffic safety messages and tips on our social media platforms, and we wanted to take just a few minutes of your time this evening to do the same presentation here tonight. And I'd like to turn it over to our Traffic Sergeant, Steve Spagan, to do the presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, members of the community. My name's Steve Spagan. I'm Sergeant of our Traffic Bureau. So I'm gonna go over a couple of traffic safety awareness items for the community, just for everybody to be aware of. So can we go to the next slide? No problem. So this is gonna be our Traffic Division. It's gonna be comprised of three officers right now. Corporal Seichner, Officer Kearns, and Officer Tuono. Officer Tuono is a new addition to our Traffic Unit. He's currently gonna be scheduled to train motor school in March of 2024. Corporal Seichner is one of our, is our lead investigator on all major accident investigations. And Officer Kearns is also a tenured traffic officer, who is also one of our main investigators for the Traffic Division. We'd like to talk about DUI awareness. As Acting Chief Cortina mentioned, we recently had a DUI lane last Thursday. We do everything we can to combat driving under influence through education, through doing DUI checkpoints, and talking to the community in such forms like this. DUIs were responsible for approximately 30% of fatal traffic collisions nationwide. DUI fatal traffic collisions happen every 45 minutes. The legal limit to operate a motor vehicle with a blood alcohol content is 0.08%. And we'd like to just really express the fact to the community that, you know, if you are planning on going to holiday celebrations, going out with friends, and this is all year round, just not for the holidays, but to utilize the ride-sharing, Uber, Lyft, taxi cabs, have a designated driver. It's very crucial and important. Some statistics, in 2020, there were 11,654 fatalities in which at least one driver involved was DUI under the influence of drugs and/or alcohol. 30% of traffic, fatal traffic collisions were DUI-related, and that was up 14.3% from the previous year. There's DUI fatality every 45 minutes, as I spoke about earlier. 1,093 of the deaths were children 14 years or younger involved in these fatal traffic collisions, which is obviously very tragic. 67%, which is 7,831, involved a driver with a alcohol content double the legal limit. Some things we also want to express, if any of the community members or anybody is involved in a traffic collision, some of the things to do is obviously the required information by California state law and for insurance purposes, is to make sure you get the driver's license number, their registration, their proof of insurance. Make sure you take very good photographs. Almost everybody here has a cellphone, 360 degrees of the vehicles when you're taking those photos. When to take a report here in the city of West Covina? We're a full-service police department, as you know, for the community as well, meaning even non-injury traffic collisions, we do take reports. So obviously, we are available to do so. You are not required to, by law, unless there is injury or death as a result. However, we are a full-service department. So if you call us, we will respond and take a police report for that traffic collision. This is kind of just a quick diagram of what to take photographs of the vehicle to make sure you take the 360 degrees. A lot of times, we'll get just a couple photographs. It doesn't show the whole, all the damages. So it's really crucial for your insurance company and for a later police report if you decide to report it later, to also document existing damage or the new damage caused by the collision. OTS is Officer Traffic Safety, Office of Traffic Safety. This is a grant that we do get here in West Covina. It's a state-funded grant, and it funds DUI checkpoints. It helps us do DUI saturations and also target issues with speeding in particular areas, also distracted driving, as well as motorcycle enforcement, seat belts, distracted driving using cellphones, pedestrian, and bike traffic. Other services for the community, parking enforcement, code enforcement. There's their extension up there for parking permits. If you have traffic problems or related questions in regards to traffic signals or issues that you see out in the roadway, email traffic@transtech.org. Any immediate traffic concerns, you could obviously call our West County Dispatch via 911 or the general number, which is 939-8500, if there's any traffic lights out or anything like that, because obviously, that could be catastrophic if we don't get an officer out there right away. And our Traffic Bureau, if you have any questions, need to speak to myself or any of the traffic investigators, the line's up there, 626-939-8555. Some safety tips while driving. I know everybody thinks a lot of this is just common sense, but you know, it's good to be, to get updated and get reminded of these things. Obviously, seat belts are huge. Buckle up every time you get into a car. It's, a lot of times, people could be saved if they were wearing their seatbelt. Obey the speed limit. I know a lot of us are distracted. We got a lot of things going on in our lives. We need to get, drop the kids off at school. We gotta get to work. But obviously, you notice, even if you're speeding a little bit, you end up getting caught at that next light. So we want everybody to follow the posted speed limits. Especially in residential areas, school zones are huge. Just, you know, kind of put yourself in the perspective of being a parent. If that, your child going to school, that you don't have to worry that someone's gonna blow through a stop sign or a crosswalk and run over your child. Stay focused, avoid distractions, it's very crucial. I know we got a lot going on, especially here in Southern California, especially in West Covina, we're a bigger city. We got the mall, we got a lot of, a lot of outside influences on the roadway. So just be focused and pay attention to your surroundings. Drive at a safe speed, avoid all rolls of the road, and make sure we're paying attention to the signs. It's very important. Be mindful of weather conditions. I know in California, we tend to have warmer climate. We don't usually have any inclement weather. However, with lately, winter and stuff like that, we have been getting rains, a lot of rain and stuff like that. So a lot of times, we get overconfident in our driving, and when that little bit of rain hits the roadway, the oils start coming up. We're not, we're not anticipating that stop, or we feel that we're used to driving down that main thoroughfare. We know the roadway, but those inclement weather conditions could change everything drastically within a second. Obviously, DUI is a huge problem, as the statistics show earlier. Remember, I know that alcohol is a huge factor, especially during the holiday season. We know that marijuana is legalized and that kind of stuff. And, you know, there's a lot of pharmaceutical medication people are under the influence of. Or if you're sick and you might got some cough medicine, you know, you've never taken it before, and it's causing you to be impaired or, you know, sleepy. Just things, a little bit of things to think about, that you don't think that might really influence you. Another thing is stopping for school buses. That goes for what I talked about earlier, just being mindful of the road, the conditions around, the schools. Regular vehicle maintenance is huge. Obviously, the brakes, making sure your vehicle is operating properly, your lights, your turn signals, fluid levels, just maintain your vehicle. And the biggest one is be patient and courteous. We all, for the entire motoring public, we don't want any more fatal traffic collisions or injuries out there. So just be patient, courteous, and drive how you want, you know, yourself to be treated on the roadway. That's all I have. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. Would any council members have any?
I have a question.
Mayor Protem Wu.
Thank you, Mayor, okay. And since the holiday season coming up, a lot of celebration, a lot of potentially drink and drive, okay, and under influence. Do we have any planning, do we have any plan to put a checkpoint to try to kind of save lives, make sure people not under influence?
Thank you, Mayor Protem Wu. Right now, we just did the DUI checkpoint for the educational purposes. We also posted those statistics on social media. And yes, we will be putting emphasis in our briefings with our officers who are out there to obviously be enforcing the traffic laws and to do everything we can to, you know.
So we will announce to, okay, our resident that the city will perform some checkpoint during this holiday season so people understand they don't drink and drive. So we really want to make sure people safe to have this holiday season.
Yes, yes, sir. And we did, we were mandated by state law to obviously do that as well. We always let the public know through media, through social media, websites as well, that a checkpoint will be set up in this particular area through the duration of the time and stuff like that, to educate the public so they know where the checkpoint's gonna be as well. So it's not a secret. But they also know that we have officers out there roaming the area to combat DUI driving.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Diaz.
I just want to thank you for this presentation. A lot of what you said, like you say, is common sense, but I think people need to hear it and listen and really pay attention to what's going on on the roads and what we do. I mean, because we all are guilty of speeding and, you know, doing other things that we shouldn't be doing. But I think this is a good reminder of what we should be and how we should be acting on the road. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for the presentation. And yes, again, a reminder, we all share the road, and we share it not only with cars, but with pedestrians, with motorcyclists, with bike riders. And so let's all just be good citizens and care for each other. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a presentation on the Rent Relief Program by the Department of Consumer and Business Affairs. Ms. Amelia F. Berquist is here this evening to let us know about the Rent Relief Program. Spearheaded by the L.A. County Board of Supervisors and administered by the Center of Land Industry, the program will distribute over $68 million in financial support to qualified landlords adversely affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council, for having us. Hello, everybody. So I am gonna be presenting about the L.A. County Rent Relief Program that just launched on December 12th. So last week, we can, should I just say next slide? There we go. Thank you. So this presentation is just gonna be, we're gonna kind of cover program basics. We will talk a little bit about program framework as well as cover what have been constituent questions and questions also from our elected officials at the Board of Supervisors and their board offices, particularly field-based staff. And then we'll end it out with any questions from the team here. So next, thank you. So rent relief, so this rent relief program right now for L.A. County, that we are gonna be providing a total of $68.6 million in grant relief for landlords. Landlords are eligible for up to $30,000 in relief per unit, and there is no maximum number of unit or applications that can be submitted. So what I mean by that is that every application is one application, one unit. So if a landlord has 12 units, if they have two properties with four units on each, there's no limit in the number of units that they've been, that are impacted, that they can apply for relief on. But there is a maximum of $30,000 per unit. So just a little high-level stuff around the rent relief application. So there is a program, a website and application portal. It is all housed in the same location. And so what we have here in the PowerPoint is what the website looks like, the homepage in particular. The first thing that hits you when you go to that website, if you are interested in knowing about the program, if you are a landlord that wants to apply, or if you are a tenant who would like to refer your landlord, if you're a tenant that's experienced COVID-related debt and inability to pay your rent, you can refer your landlord, and the program administrators will reach out and engage landlord around applying for that relief. So that is your homepage. There is a process by which any applicant must register on the website, and that front page is right over here. So there's a little bit of guidance on what you can expect that to look like. And then on that homepage, as you scroll down, there's actually a program and application guide that really gives you step-by-step from the very initial process of landing on the program website homepage, all the way through to submission of your application and what you can expect with respect to applicable follow-up, documents that you'll be needing to submit throughout the application process, et cetera. Currently, the program and application guide is only available in English, but they are being translated right now and will be available very soon in all county access languages, which are, you know, we have a total of about 14. Next slide, please. So with respect to eligibility, eligibility, we wanted to make this broad, expansive, and inclusive. And so it's a, it's a low barrier to entry program. There's only three eligibility requirements for anybody to apply or for a landlord to apply. The first is that the landlord owns a property, a rental property, in L.A. County, with the exception of the city of L.A. That may not be applicable here, but I'll say it anyways. The reason for that is the city of Los Angeles has just actually completed their Emergency Rental Assistance Program that's very similar to this. And so we are representing and providing resources to folks outside of that particular city. The second piece of eligibility is that the units that the landlord is applying for relief on, that they must still be occupied by the impacted tenants. The reason for that is because the goal of this program is to both provide much-needed relief to landlords who have been affected by the pandemic indirectly because of their tenants being impacted by it and unable to pay rent. The goal is also to keep vulnerable families housed. And so that is one of the eligibility criteria. And then the third eligibility criteria is that the rental debt is a reflection of COVID, or is, excuse me, not a reflection. It's due to the COVID-19 pandemic and for a particular period from April 1st, 2022 to present. And the reason that it's that date is because we had a state program that went up through that date. And so we are coming on the back end, excuse me, to cover the particular gap up to present. Next slide, please. So there is $68 million in funding for rent relief, and that's still not enough. And so we had to, through expectations and the board, the vision of the Board of Supervisors and what they really wanted to achieve out of this program in maximizing those dollars, is that they identified some core prioritization criteria that essentially will mean that an application will be prioritized for review. There are four criteria. The two top criteria are really centered around serving those who are most economically vulnerable. So a tenant or a landlord who are low income, and the threshold that we have is 80%, at or below 80% AMI, Area Median Income for L.A. County. And we here in L.A. County have a COVID-19 Vulnerability and Recovery Index, which essentially identifies locations throughout the county that are housing folks who are the most vulnerable to COVID-19-related impacts, whether that is morbidity, mortality, the economic fallout, the workforce industries that were most highly impacted. So that is what that reflects. The next two are really around grant relief, fully satisfying tenant debt for the eligible period. Again, this is because we really want to prioritize not only getting relief into the hands of landlords, we want to keep families housed. And then lastly, small mom-and-pop landlords owning no more than four rental units. So again, these are prioritizations. So if somebody submits an application and they meet one of the priority criteria, they will be placed in a certain priority group. Those that meet, those who meet more priority criteria will rise to the top for review. But all applications will be screened upfront and almost immediately for prioritization in addition to eligibility. And then they will be placed in a priority group where you'll be able to look online, or you can look online at your application portal to know which priority group you're in and if that group has opened up for review just yet. Next slide, please. So this is a, this is a timeline of the initial application. And it's initial, meaning everything goes as expected. Landlords, tenants, they get their documents in, they're responsive to follow-up, et cetera. And they are in a group whose applications are being reviewed. So for example, Priority Group 1 is going, is the first and is currently being reviewed. And so what folks in that group right now can expect is that from the time that an application is submitted, that they will have in their portal, that they submitted their application in, they will be able to see within two business days their eligibility and the prioritization group that they have been placed in. If they are in a priority group where this, they, where that group is being reviewed, applications will be reviewed, expected follow-up will be completed, due diligence, et cetera, within three weeks, at which time, there will be a determination made and the landlord will be notified. If they are awarded a grant, a grant, grant relief, it will take upwards of about four weeks for them to see that money land in their bank. So, excuse me. The initial application timeline is approximately eight weeks. This, again, is really dependent upon, number one, the priority group that that applicant has been placed in and that group being under review. That's also contingent upon the responsiveness of the applicant and tenants in the event that there's needed follow-up. And if somebody is denied and they decide to appeal, or if they're granted only a certain amount of relief that they disagree with, they have 30 days to appeal. And from that 30 days, or from the time that they file an appeal, it should take about another four weeks before they'll have a final determination. Next slide. Okay, so community support. For anybody who is interested, for anybody who is an applicant, there is a call center that is open seven days a week, with the exception of federal holidays. It's open daily from 7:00 to 7:00 PM. And I'll say this out loud, even though it's up on the screen. The phone number to get in contact with the call center is 877-849-0770. The call center is really kind of your first stop, if you will. That, the call center is going to be able to respond to basic questions about the application, about use of the portal, troubleshooting, login issues, et cetera, providing referring partner, or excuse me, applicants and interested applicants to the local partner network, which I'll cover in the next slide. But that's essentially on-the-ground community organizations that are tied to the communities in which they're located and can provide in-person assistance. They're gonna be, they, yeah, in-person assistance, provide greater support for folks that have more than just basic questions that need to be answered or need additional application support. And the call center has language support of all of the county's access languages. And so if you call the call center, many of the staff are bilingual. But in the event that there is not a person in, you know, on staff at the moment or available, that's, that, you know, for the language that the applicant or the caller is, needs, they are also connected to a telephonic translation service, and they'll get them connected so that there's language concordance. Next slide. Okay, so the local partner network, and I'm sure for anybody looking at this screen, a little bit bigger over there, but these slides are also printable and shareable. So if, you know, if folks would, it's also available online, which might be a lot easier for you to access. But so there are eight local partners, community organizations. We have, there is a presence in every supervisory district. And all of the partners are accepting referrals and offering support to everyone regardless of the district that that applicant lives in. So they are gonna be offering technical assistance and one-on-one support that can be in-person, it can be virtual. They are doing a ton, right now, I think we have 37 workshops that are scheduled and available online in multiple languages to provide guidance and walkthroughs for interested applicants, to provide support for applicants who have already submitted an application and may have follow-up that they need guidance on. They are also going to be doing all of the community-based outreach and the marketing, distributing outreach materials at events, et cetera, and growing the public's, public awareness of it. And again, these local partners also have, are able to provide And again, these local partners also have, are able to provide support in all of the county threshold languages. Slide, please. Okay. So lastly, for more information, so we've got the call center that we covered. Again, it's 877-849-0770. The call center is open 7:00 to 7:00, Monday through Sunday. We've got the rent relief website and application portal. They're really, you know, we've got the website, the portal is embedded within there, so you find that right on the homepage. That is, you can find that at lacountyrentrelief.com. And then lastly, we've got the rent relief local partner network, which is linked in here as well, and that can be found at the, you know, as a link at the top of the homepage on the website. And you can go there to see the calendar of webinars, to see all of the local partners, their primary contacts for you to reach out to. So we're really hoping that folks that are interested, folks that have submitted applications, folks that have questions, that you are able to contact and reach out in any of these mediums and get the support that you need. So thank you. I can, I'm happy to take questions.
Fantastic. Councilmember Kontos, did you have a question?
I do. I actually have several questions, if it's okay. What is the working partnership with the California Apartment Association? And also, what are the community partner organizations that serve West Covina? And are there any examples of that, where, of cities where you worked, with whom, with which you've worked, where there are active partnerships to, to look and identify different landlords and wherever their vacancy rates to try to, to match, or to try to eliminate those vacancies by, by encouraging renters to participate, landlords to participate in the program?
Thank you, Councilmember Kontos. So to your first question around, oh my gosh, it just slipped my mind the very top of your--
I'm sorry.
That's, oh, sorry. California Apartment Association, that's what it was. So throughout this entire process, as we geared up to launch this program, we have been, so number one, the Department of Consumer and Business Affairs has been sending out press releases, or we've been, you know, submitting or distributing press releases. We have been sending out emails, electronic notifications, et cetera. That includes California Apartment Association, as well as the LA, Los Angeles Apartment Association of Greater LA, AGLA. And so we have been engaged with landlord groups, particularly that we have, that we have learned about and engaged with from previous stakeholder engagement that we've had, et cetera. So we were really, really keen about making sure that word about this program got out to landlords, and we have seen that the press releases have resulted in, for example, the California Apartment Association publishing, you know, the press release to their, you know, constituents and stakeholders. So there's that piece. With respect to community-based organizations serving West Covina, so again, for this program in particular, all of the local partners, which there are eight, all of them are serving all of LA County. And I know that this is supervisory district--
One.
One, thank you. Sorry, I was about to say three. With this being in supervisory district one, there are two organizations, and if we go back a couple slides, to the, oh, keep, keep going towards the end.
To the end?
Yeah, 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 yeah. There's a grid. Keep going, there we go. So actually, so Chinatown Service Center is the, one of the eight local partners who are located in SD1. But again, the rest of the partners all are receiving and providing support across the county. So I think I remembered all of your questions.
The other one was, are there any examples that you can share about best practices of cities who've worked in partnership with you actively to try to fill vacancies by working with landlords to make sure to have them know that these programs exist, so that way the vacancies can be filled by people who are, who, who can participate in your program as tenants?
Yeah, so that's a really great question, and I'm very happy to follow up on that. I am not quite sure what other cities the department has worked with closely with respect to filling vacancies, with respect to, you know, the department is, administers, manages and oversees the stay-housed LA efforts that are county-wide, and that is also about keeping folks housed, providing rent relief, et cetera. And so, you know, I, I think that with respect to working with landlords around getting tenants into their vacant units, I think that's less of the central function of what the department does. And in fact, we kind of come behind when issues are arising, such as, for example, rent relief and COVID-related debt, and trying to, you know, ensure that landlords have the resources that they need and that tenants are able to stay in their homes. But I am happy to follow up with you and engage with my colleagues around specific work with landlords with respect to filling their vacancies.
Good, thank you. Looking forward to that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Protem Wu.
Okay, and can you describe, okay, the qualification for the tenant? Okay, and I missed, okay, what is qualification? And so in that way, most of people, they understand they have a help, okay? And I think this, could you answer this question first?
Sure. So just so that I understand the question correctly, are you asking me what it is that is required of tenants in order for landlords to be granted this relief?
Correct.
Okay, great. That's a great question. So this is a landlord-forward program. What that means is that landlords must apply in order to be provided relief. Typically, with the emergency rental assistance programs that we've seen since COVID hit, our tenant-forward programs, right? So tenants apply, tenants show proof that there's debt, they get a check, you know, they get money sent to them or the grant, they get a grant, and then they are expected to provide that grant money, turn it over to the landlord to resolve the debt. With this program, it is, the check is going into the hands of the landlord, so tenants really don't have a whole lot that they need to do, with the exception of providing income verification and confirming that they still live in the rental unit. And so what that looks like is after a landlord has completed an application and submitted it, as the program administrator is, you know, reviewing everything and conducting due diligence, one of the pieces that they do is that they will call the tenant to say, hey, this is who we are, this is why we're calling, this is what we just need to confirm. And so we have been really, really heavily communicating about the importance of landlords, especially those that are going to apply, around them communicating directly with their tenants to ensure participation.
So basically, the landlord, they have apartment, they have a couple of tenants maybe struggling to pay the rent, am I right?
Yeah.
So, so they basically apply, okay, and for the tenant through this program, so if they qualify and they can receive the rent, and that is how the, the process is?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, and the next question would be, so in that way, we have a couple of tenants that are struggling with family, with children, okay, and they, they have a problem, okay? So rather than, okay, evict them or this or that, or the landlord suffer, but they have to, they have no income. So for that, they can apply through this program and hopefully can, can be approved, but how long, how many months that the landlord can receive so they can have all this family to stay in their place?
Right. So if we go to the, the, the beginning of the, the presentation, so there is no limit on the number of months, there is a maximum of $30,000 per unit in relief that a landlord is eligible for. So what we are seeing preliminarily, so the, in the period, so there's a time period and there's a maximum amount of grant relief per unit. So the time period is April 1st, 2022 to present. So every day that ticks by is currently covered. And landlords, it doesn't matter how many months of previous rent is, is due, they are eligible for upwards of $30,000. So, go ahead.
Yeah, so $30,000 max. So for example, they owe $3,000 for three months already, so they have another seven months to go. Because $30,000, 10 months, basically, the landlord paying for the tenant for 10 months for $30,000 max, if we say $3,000 a month rent, and they've, they have been, okay, not paying for three months, so in that way, they only have seven months to go until they stay there. Am I right?
So please correct me if I'm, if I'm not understanding correctly, but, so is what you're saying is that, is there proactive ability to pay rent upfront for families that have stated that they will not be able to pay rent for the--
Correct. For example, the, the tenant cannot pay due to the--
I see.
Okay, lose the, lost the job and the situation or heard this or that, so they're struggling to pay the rent. This happened to a lot of families.
Absolutely.
Okay, and so how can landlord help them, or how the city can help those family to apply, the landlord to apply?
Yeah.
So for example, they haven't paid for a couple of months, a landlord say, okay, maybe I can apply this program for you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we're talking about $30,000 max, if they already owe, okay, two months, three months, can they be retrofied for the previous money or, or the $30,000 for next 10 months?
Got you. So no. So it has to be a debt that has been incurred, it cannot be a future debt that is incurred. So if somebody, for, as the example that you cited around somebody, a family is three months behind in rent and it's been, you know, it's $3,000 a month, they owe 9,000, then they, the landlord would only be eligible for the $9,000 in rental debt that they're--
Oh, so they cannot apply for a month?
Not prospective. No, they can't apply for, for grant relief for the future.
Okay. So, so basically, this is just relief for the landlord, rather than really helping the tenant for the future rent?
So it's, it's, the aim and the goal is that it is helping the landlord and that it's keeping tenants housed, but this is about resolving COVID-related debt that has been incurred. And so because we have such limited funding, we don't have enough money to say, okay, if there's a projection that there's going to be ongoing debt, we can go ahead and give you that money upfront so that you can make sure that your rent is covered. The purpose and the point of this program is to provide relief for any debt that was, that has been incurred over the course of the last, you know, year, almost two years.
So basically, paying the debt off, rather than--
That is correct.
Pay the future rent for the tenant to stay in that complex, so the children can stay there.
Yeah. Well, I think that the hope is also that folks are slowly getting back on their feet and that they will be able to sustain the rent going forward and that any previous debt is taken care of so that they have net zero.
So last question would be, what is a successful rate, since you only have the $60 million? Okay, if all the city in the LA County, we have 11 million population, so $60 million paying for this, almost like very little money to spread out, for San Gabriel Valley, 31 city.
Yeah.
So, so, and you have a lot, a lot of apartment.
Yeah.
So what is a successful rate? We don't want let people to apply and most of them will fail.
Well, I, you know, I think that, you know, there's data out there that shows the impact that debt relief, debt specifically, that debt relief provides with respect to keeping families housed and keeping landlords viable. And, you know, I think that the, I think that there is a much bigger conversation to be had around how it is as a county, as well as all of the cities within Los Angeles County, about how it is that when there's the budgeting process, where it is that dollars are placed, right? And how it is that there may be fiscal prioritization of providing relief for renters going forward, right? I, you know, we know that in the state, but especially in Los Angeles, we have a housing crisis, a housing affordability crisis, and so, you know, folks are really struggling. So I think that it's a very, this is a big, big issue.
Understand, but I, I think the city point of view is we try to avoid potential homelessness, okay? And, and if people will be evicted, we want to keep them inside of their complex, and if, if we have a program, okay, to, for the future six months rent, so we can keep the family--
Absolutely.
--over there and rather than just paying off the debt, okay? And so in that way, we can avoid the potential homelessness and they live in the car. So, so I think this is maybe, we can have a maybe future program that, that will can kind of help those of a family. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I want to thank you for, for the presentation, and, you know, I, I think it's important that all landlords and tenants in the city of West Covina are educated on this program, understand that it exists. I know a lot of landlords were, were hurt during, during COVID in the moratorium, and to know that there is money available for them to, to get that relief and then to also start tenants with a clean slate. I think that is one of the things when we're looking at keeping people from being evicted, is when you remove that debt, allow them to start fresh. And the fact that this money is, is now available, hopefully, all of the, the landlords in West Covina who had to, to suffer, and I know quite a few have reached out and were upset during, during the moratorium, and the, the county has, has heard that and is now providing this relief. Obviously, you know, it, it probably is not enough to repair everyone, but hopefully those in the city of West Covina will apply and, and get some of that relief. So thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you for having us.
Thank you. All right. We are now going to be moving on to our City Manager's Report, which will be given by our Acting City Manager, Paulina Morales.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'll just do a brief report as it'll be the last one for the year. So first and foremost, if we can, just, the last event that we held this year was our annual Christmas, Children's Christmas Parade in Santa's Village. If you can put the video, Karen. So this is the annual parade that we, the city of West Covina does in partnership with the West Covina Quanis in historic downtown West Covina. And so we invited the community members, so we had bands from different, our different schools in the community perform during the parade, and I think at the end, there's Santa's Village, so people could take photos of Santa, the farmer's market as well was there. And so I think it's a very nice event that we are able to host every year. So we hope to see more families next year. This year, we were able to launch our very first Letters to Santa program, and so I don't know if you guys noticed, but coming in, there is a mailbox where any members of the community were able to drop off letters, and Santa should have been responding to those letters, and so they should get a response by Christmas time. And so those letters sent to, dropped off in the mailbox were sent to the North Post, to the North Pole Postal Service, directly to Santa Claus. So we did receive approximately 96 letters through our post service this year, so we're excited to get that program up and running. I know there's been some community comments about shopping carts throughout the city. We did develop an ordinance requiring businesses to develop shopping cart containment programs that will be in effect April 21st, or was April 21st, 2023. And they are required to have programs where the shopping carts have to stay on the property. If you see a shopping cart, you can report it through the West Covina Report app under other issues. We are working with our maintenance staff to possibly, which would be brought before the council, to work with a vendor that they would, that would be their sole job to pick up shopping carts with the community. So that might be an option that we look for in the future to help address those shopping carts left within the community. Just an update on some lawsuits. So over, or the lawsuit with AT&amp;T was dismissed over the weekend, which is a huge win for the city. So they were fighting a denial that the, the council provided, and they decided to walk away from the lawsuit, and so that's been dropped. So we're very happy to announce that. And then as we are nearing the holidays, City Hall will be closed to the public. You know, our police officers and firemen and firewomen will still be servicing the community. We will also have some of our maintenance staff working during the holiday week, as well as our code enforcement staff members. And so we will still be responding to-- And so we will still be responding to calls and to service requests, but we will be on limited staffing next week. We will open up City Hall January 2nd, and we will not have a council meeting January 2nd, which is one of the items on the agenda tonight. That's one of the meetings that's being canceled for the 2024 calendar year. And then with that, I wish everyone a happy holidays and a happy new year.
Thank you. All right, we will now move on to oral communications. If anyone would like to address the council, please fill out an orange speaker card and submit it to the assistant city clerk. When you hear your name being called, please start lining up in the center row. The timer will start when your name is called to speak. How many speakers do we have?
We have seven speaker cards this evening, mayor.
Okay, can you call the first speaker?
Yes, sir. Our first speaker is John Schumaker, followed by R. Robinson, followed by Midlife Crisis.
When I was driving over here today, it dawned on me that I've been coming to council meetings for about 25 years and probably spoke at every one of them that I attended. And this is probably the first time, and thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Wu, for giving me something to start off with, because I wasn't quite sure what I was going to say about some of the situations. First of all, where did all the, where did all the West Covina Care Act money go, Tony? You're sitting here, this poor woman who's representing the county. Well, why isn't the county spending more money on it? That's only this, this, and this. How much of the $20 million this city got did we spend on rent relief? And how much do we give to small businesses in our community? How much, Tony? Zero is the answer. And you're chastising the county for not doing enough when you did nothing? Nothing! But that fits. You know, last, that last meeting, we had some people here who lost family members to a tragic accident, to a tragic accident. You know, I, I don't know what that would be like to lose a child. I know what it felt like to lose my wife, but she was, obviously had gone through more of her life. She wasn't a young, very young woman. And what did Tony Wu want to do? Let's put a plaque up. What's the plaque going to say? Dedicated in the memory of the people who lost their lives, you know, this day and his name will be on it along with the rest of you? You know, and then to say, we don't have the money to do it. I have a question for you. We had money to do a Spring Fest. We had money to do all these other things. We spent $250,000 at least as subsidies to his wife's charity. Tony, or anybody, ask the question, answer the question. Would $250,000 put a light up there that might have saved a couple of lives or three lives? We have spent or had budgeted $750,000 for the sportsplex. Would that have paid for a light that might have saved lives in our community? Then you take the other things that are going on. It isn't that we don't have the money, it's that having a party is more important than the lives of people in our community. You'll say after I leave, oh, we've hired police officers. Yes, we have hired police officers to replace who have left or retired, quit or whatever the case may be. We have not added additional officers. You know, oh, we give them all the resources they need except one of the most important other bodies, other people. One person doing two jobs is not the same as two people each doing a job. That one person can only cover a certain amount of territory. Another person can carry a whole lot. You know, but that's the type of, oh, we give them all the resources. No, you're not. We pay, when you take the overtime budgets, we, for the police and fire, we pay for 200 sworn personnel. We have 160. What would we have if we had another 25 officers out on the street? Would there have been an officer nearby that would have, oh, they see an officer, they might have slowed down and lives would have been saved? So when you get up here and talk about, oh, we feel sorry for the, for the people, oh, I agree, but I'll tell you one thing, because you'll spend monies on parties, you don't care about human life in our city or the safety. Their death, their blood is on your hands, sweet and simple.
R. Robinson, followed by Midlife Crisis, followed by Elisa Jimenez.
Angry people behind the wheel of a car are extremely dangerous. The lack of police presence on our streets leaves the streets to angry people who believe they own the road. I've encountered these people driving and escaped unscathed by luck alone so far, but the body count is piling up. Four dead cyclists, including one dead liquor store employee who confronted shoplifters, means that bodies are lying on our streets for hours awaiting pickup by the coroner's office. Residents want a safer city with adequate visible police presence on the streets as a signal that we are still a city where law matters. Angry, dangerous drivers don't own our streets and 4,600 parking ticket code enforcers violations won't help residents by, by the 12 new part-time code enforcement hire, hiring lanes, replacing department managers and the police chief. And those, you know, that, those policies won't help residents' morale. Turning our streets into a parking ticket paradise is not going to help. It seems there is no awareness or independent thinking on our council of these problems at a time when we need a better policy to maintain West Covina's safety and reduce the body count. Current policy only makes everyone angry, and there's already too much anger here. Active residents and voters need to take back our city. Election integrity must be emphasized. I mean, I have to produce ID at a gun range or a bowling alley, a traffic stop, but there's no, no voting ID. I mean, that's an invitation to election irregularity. And because our national borders are, are open, we're experiencing a physical invasion. You know, mountains of absentee ballots and a 30-day election, February 5th to March 5th, makes no sense. The lengthy primary voting period is ridiculous. It makes fraud and ballot harvesting easier, enables electronic dishonesty and election fraud. The elected governor of Arizona never took office, Terry Lake. Voting should be a maximum of only three days. And crippled, crippled and dishonest election means we're not going to vote our way out of this. The next subject, there's a documentary just released called The Great Taking by David Webb, reports that our national demon consists in private control of, of national central banks. Webb reports that central bankers have a system in place to take everything away from everyone. It involves Section 7 and 8 of the universal Uniform Commercial Code in all 50 states enacted between 1994 and 2004. Exercises include dematerialization of assets backed by securities, derivative financial instruments where misleading imagery and fear and psychological operation shuts down our critical thinking skills, we're frozen in fear. Credit underwritings become unhinged, combined with phony derivative manipulations wherein a false flag crisis is staged. The everything bubble being cooked up is a barely legal and unethical, unethical morally subverts, subverts property rights, manipulates bankruptcy court proceedings in unexpected ways. Entitlement owners
Thank you, Bill.
... by legal owners.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Midlife Crisis, followed by Elisa Jimenez, followed by Walter Croner.
How you doing, y'all? I'm at crisis. Mayor, I'm ashamed of you. I'll tell you why. You stood out there that day as we passed out over 700 flyers. I didn't go to that party that night because I feel like I'd be a hypocrite. And I'm not going to your next one. Instead of you guys going out campaigning for your next seat, you guys should be going out campaigning for them families and getting these lights fixed. I know all the red tape. I talked to the sergeant and stuff outside. I know it's a long process, this and that and stuff. I've heard some stories about you, Tony Wu. I'll investigate them some more. I'm a journalist. I'll get them out there. Where's this lady at? Acting city manager? You guys got blood on your hands. You're wearing some fake Christmas suit right now? Just a show? I would have called you out the other night, big time, in front of all your peers. I'm being nice and calm right now, by the grace of God. I've been a motorcyclist for three years. My wife almost seen me go down. I went down one time. I was lucky enough to call my wife and tell my wife that I went down. I got messed up shoulders. I got messed up elbows, rolled rashes all over me. Because someone, there was an accident on the fire freeway going south. Some guy was in the diamond lane by himself, 19-year-old kid, not going nowhere. He decided to come out. I was splitting the lane, smack him, went down rolling. Plenty of your friends have got pins in their legs, pins in their hips just recently. And now I got this. Stop being hypocrites. Start getting out there and get these lights fixed for these families. At least give them some kind of justice and some kind of okay that you guys are on your side. I know you guys had a meeting earlier today. Maybe it was fruitful, maybe it wasn't. There are some different stories. But Mayor, I'm ashamed of you. You and I have personal conversations. I thought of all people that you'd be fighting harder for this. I'm ashamed of you, all of you. Cut out that frickin' red tape. These families are mourning. They just buried their kids. They just buried them. All that crying you guys did last time? I think that was fake. I think that was just all a show, just like the party you had the other night. Like I said, that's why I didn't go. It's all a show. It's all for your next seat, all of you. It's all for your next seats. It's all you're waiting for is your next seats. You'll move on to more money, bigger houses, better cars. But these families for Christmas and the holidays are going to be suffering. So when you're sitting down, your meals with your families this weekend for Christmas, remember these people. Have them in your minds, your hearts, and your prayers. I know you guys don't care. Prove me wrong. Prove West Covina wrong. Over 16 motorcyclists down in the last two months in your city. I'm taking this personal. I'm not going to say God bless until this is done.
Elisa Jimenez, followed by Walter Croner, followed by Bill Elliott.
Good evening. What an intense evening. I'm Elisa Jimenez and I'm having a couple of issues in West Covina. I've been a person living in the, in the city. I'm sorry, I heard a little bit too much and I didn't know. I don't know, but it sounded like somebody's suffering a lot. I don't want to. Good evening. So let me regroup. I'm having a problem because I've been in the city since 2001 with a lot of programs. And last week, I had a neighbor threatening me that, that certain member from this city, I don't think it would be fair to say who, because it might not be true, so that's the honest rule, that she would take care of me. And so I've been getting the, the, what is it? The court enforcement every day at the house, giving me tickets for parking my cars inside. I do a lot of work in this community. We have the presidential award, senators awards, and the cities awards, and I, I can't believe that instead of giving me a warning, because I told him, I'm parking inside because today is the sweeping street and we don't want to cause a problem for that. And but since the problem with that lady who says we know somebody in the city, it seems code enforcement is really active in my property and that has been a problem because we've called the city, there's people, we have a mega problem in that, in that corner of Sunset and in Puente. There's buildings, there's where the people got shot because somebody entered to steal. The police is always there. It's a very difficult, conflicting apartment complex that is towards, towards crossing the street right next to the gas station. And we have drugs, prostitution, if you saw the things. So all the neighbors, we gather together, we put our money, we put trees and plants to cover so the people won't go and do their drugs and leave their bottles, which has harmed the cars. But I really would request to please help us with this issue because, I mean, I love my city, that's why I'm here. I could go to other cities, but I prefer living here. But whoever's sending the court enforcement, this has to stop because this is harassment. Like I, I feed the people. We feed over 500 people. And the court enforcement, instead of giving me a warning for putting my cars in the house, and I have the pictures, he put tickets to every single car in the unit. So please, I don't know how to help the police or the city. I'm willing to do it because I love to speak my mind. I'm not in a popularity contest. I love authorities, but we need help with what's happening in that place as people are getting killed, there are deals with drugs. I don't drink, I don't do drugs, but I work with a lot of people that do. But I don't want to see this in the city of West Covina because it causes enormous amounts of pain. And I, I want to wish you happy holidays and be festive, you know? Like what is happening in the city? So can you please help me with this issue? We also need other things, but I think that there's other people that need time and I'm very grateful to be here and I know you guys will do the best that you can for each one of us. Sometimes it's very hard because we are a lot of people. And I know when we stand in front of each one of you, we think, oh, this is my case, I want you to do something right now. And sometimes it doesn't work like that because there's another pressing issue. But happy holidays, God bless you, and I hope that everybody who has been in pain, maybe I don't understand or, or know enough, may they heal all may they heal all that angry feeling. So good evening. Thank you.
Walter Croner, followed by Bill Elliott, followed by Ray Vargas.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I was here a few months ago and I asked for permitted parking. I live a couple doors down from this lovely lady, and the problem she has is the same problems I have. The drug people, what happened is that the West Covina projects, they got a security guard. So all the kids that used to smoke pot and crack in the back area, he's chased them out. Wanna see a picture of them at our front house? This is, you wanna see what I see when I open my front door? I see this. I don't know. How would you like to see that when you open your front door and when your kids come to see you or your grandkids? They're smoking crack, it smells like ammonia, but they are forced out of the back of where the apartment building is. And now the Beatty Baptist has got a guard that drives through in a car, so he's chased them out of there. So now they're just right across the street. The divider with the plant she's talking about, batteries, motor oil, it's all dying out. It's all ugly. As she said, we started planning, we got together as neighbors, let's put all the andes in, let's fertilize them, we'll water them. So we have a barrier. We get the big rigs coming through there at night, all the time, loud noises. There must be, what, 20, 30,000 cars that pass through there? Isn't that the entrance into our great city? It should be beautiful, but it's trash. You wanna see the trash in the street? We got pictures of that. Jesse, the coding guy, was there this morning. He gave her tickets. But the people that were parked there, the street cleaner, I got a video, the street cleaner come in, he's going in and out of cars, they got no tickets. So I don't understand that. We need your help. We need permitted parking, what we ask. Maybe I've talked to Jesse in planning, engineering, traffic. I don't know how to get through to them. Maybe you can assist us. Where are these 100 cars? And from what the people there, is the apartment building charges them an extra $75 or $100 for the second car. They get one spot. Three bedrooms costs $3,500, an extra parking spot costs them $75. So we have 100 cars on our street. What I see out of my front door is these kids now are moving into our little section. And you see the mom carrying the baby with the little kid, running across the traffic. So if you got 100 cars on the street, you got a lot of people crossing that major traffic. There's gonna be, somebody get ran over. We hear the honking horns. Is there any way to make a sound variance where they drive through with the cars that go boom, boom, boom? Rattles our windows, it's so loud, the motorcycles and everything. How can you help me or how can I help you get permitted parking where they stay off our little street? Is there something you could direct me to do with the city? Is there something we need to go fill out? Because, or we talk to all the neighbors. We would show up in person and vote in person here in front of you.
I understand during public comment, we're not allowed to respond. But the city manager, after public comment, will respond to your request.
Okay. All right. I have the same problem she has. Thank you for listening to me.
Bill Elliott, followed by Ray Vargas.
Good evening, City Council. Bill Elliott, longtime resident, constitutional advocate, Second Amendment advocate. 10 years ago tonight, or this month, I stood at this podium for the first time. And I spoke out in favor of self-protection and the Second Amendment, which is our constitutional right. I'm proud of the work that we've done. We raised a lot of consciousness about the issue. And thank God, we have concealed carry in West Covina today. And thank God for the Supreme Court and the Bruin decision that reinforced our rights as Americans to protect ourselves from the criminal element. And I'm thankful for the West Covina Police Department, Captain Cortina, and the sergeant that gave the presentation tonight. It's very good. We do need more police officers. And I think that disparaging the police, disparaging the City Council, is not really fair. They, I believe that the police department works very hard in what they're doing, and they deserve our support. Where is Jerry Patris tonight? She was up here, standing here, lying in the last City Council meeting, talking about compounding in the city's, City Council pay. Where is she tonight? How come she's not here apologizing for lying to the people of West Covina? It just shows her lack of integrity. She thinks a little apology on Jay Meter's little hater page on Facebook's gonna suffice. Where are you, Jerry? Where are you? Joan Shoemaker likes to get up here and tell lies, too. I know when he's lying because his lips are moving. John's favorite way to lie is by conflation. And his second favorite way to lie is by omission. And John won't tell you this, but some people are saying that when his grandchildren were fired upon, that they had guns in their car as well. And that car resembled a police car. And that car had flashing lights on it. You won't hear John tell you anything about that because he's a liar. He's unethical. He lies by omission. And we're never gonna get away from that. This is a circus for him. He criticizes Tony Wu and supposedly his wife's charity. You know, he's a CPA. He knows no one owns a 501(c)(3) charitable organization. It's not owned by anyone. It's a charity. And it's absurd for him to suggest that they're somehow benefiting from anything having to do with that charity. He just wants to criticize, and he has a desire to be on the City Council, which is laughable. Shoemaker will never serve on this City Council because his reputation precedes him. Of all the people that got up here tonight, and maybe you're gonna speak after me, complaining about the police department, Brian Tabatabai voted. He didn't just run on this platform, he voted to defund the West Covina Police Department. We lost 10 officers through attrition. And if you don't know what attrition is, look it up. We lost 10 officers through attrition, and the city staff prepared the documents to restore those 10 officers to our small police department. We were down to 90 officers. And the vote came down in the City Council to authorize that funding, and Brian Tabatabai voted no. He does not care about the safety of this city. He does not care about the citizens of this city. He wants to just spew his political ideology on all of us. And he's a despicable person. And he is trying to defund our police with every move he makes. And you don't hear him talk about that these days, or stolen land, because he's running for Assembly. He's actually running for two offices at one time, trying to dip his toe into both pools. But if you're gonna be angry at anyone, I don't hear anyone besides me criticizing this person trying to defund our police department, make the police department smaller.
Ray Vargas, followed by Mr. G.
Good evening. I'm back. The incidents that we've been having on Vincent and Puente, I still see the power pole. It's still snapped at the bottom. It's hanging by a thread. It's been like that for maybe five months already. It's either gonna fall on the two-story house of my neighbors, or it's gonna fall on the car or on a child walking across that street. I asked you last time, and I'll ask you again, who cares up here? Like I told you guys, from Cantos, you're safe because you just got here. But all you four gotta be removed, you know? I know you're running for Assembly. Now I hear you're running for something else and whatnot. You aren't our district. You got voted by us. We put you here for a reason. Because when you were one of us sitting back here, you were speaking your mind. And now you're a puppet of Tony's. Now you just sit there and bobble your hip. That's all you do. That's all you do. You don't work for the community. You don't work for the city. You don't work for the citizens. You're under Tony's wing. You do whatever he says, whatever the hell he tells you, you know? Now you know how it feels. Now you can play with the mute button, you know? Now you enjoy playing your video games back there. You can mute me all you want, but I'm gonna call you out every meeting until you do your job. Don't go and go for Assembly. Don't try to be another board member here and there, this and that. Deal with what you got in your backyard. Clean up your backyard first, and then address other issues you want. You know? I told you, your husband went in my house. He sat at my dining table. He made promises, and he never fulfilled them. Don't ever go to my house and make promises in my house again. You came there, you knocked on my door. You should never went there. You came here because of this puppet. You sent him to my house, you know? Don't ever send nobody to my house. Unless I tell you to go, you go. But all this going on with the city, it's corrupted. What I'm hearing about Shoemaker, $250,000, you know, donated to your wife's charity, this $20 million, you know, where was it spent? You know, we got people dying on Puente and Vincent. We got accidents every other day, every weekend, big accidents. You guys said, "Hey, you know what? We're gonna turn signals." I heard there was a grant already out. Why aren't the turn signals up? You know, I'm gonna have a nice holiday. I'm gonna have a nice Christmas. My daughter's birthday is on December 28th. I'm gonna have a nice New Year's because I got all my kids together and my wife. But we got families here that are missing their loved ones on the holidays. And nobody here gives a damn. Because nobody here is making the effort. You guys are out there with the street fairs and this and that, and having a good time out there and this and that, and these people are suffering. You guys should be on the corner of Vincent and Puente. That's where I should see you guys at. Not out there celebrating and this and that, and raise money for my campaign, and raise money for my charity and stuff like that. That's all BS. When you leave, take that, where is he at? Take that moron with you. Mylin, he's the problem, the court enforcement. You know I had that problem with him? I had to take the city to Superior Court in LA. I got all my money back. I got $3,200 back, plus harassment. Take it to LA Superior. You know, I showed you all the paperwork. How many times was he's doing it? Passing by, taking videos, taking pictures and whatnot? He don't have the guts to get off and talk to me, but he could pass by and take videos, snapshots and stuff. That's a problem we got here in this city, too. You guys got the wrong person here. You guys are building a court enforcement instead of police officers. You guys want kids out there. You guys don't want the guys that are gonna handle the business, take care of the business. I just heard you're gonna defund the police department? That's wrong.
Mr. G.
City Clerk, give me one second. Just for those of you who haven't spoken before, we make sure to only address the council during public comment. Thank you.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. I sit back, and I remember when these people came here. Same time I was asking the police department to help me with the friend whose daughter was kidnapped. Seems that's going on. I literally would like councilman, mayor, pro tem to stop and think. When a police officer is on the street, most people slow down. When a police officer stops a suspicious car, although they think it's harassment, for example, let's say someone's driving a muscle car, okay? Because of whatever type of situation. Well, if I'm gonna commit a crime, I'd be a fool to bring my car and hold my evidence or my goods in a muscle car, because they're gonna know they're gonna stop me. But if I get my girlfriend's car, and I get them, and I see what's going on, but the cops there, and they stop them, they're gonna pay attention. The more police you have on the street, the safer the city is. Not a extra manager to manage six or seven recreation things, that's nice. That's nice to have that stuff. But the city, people really want to be a safe city. My family's been in this city for seven decades. It was known as a safe city. Because the police, if you didn't look like you belonged, it'd stop you. It wasn't a fact that you, or anything, it was to see what was going on. So when the police are out there, parked on the side of the road or driving through, people maintain safety. Life has been lost. People are being harassed who actually live in the city. And because of the situations we border, some different types of standard cities. I mean, they're still cities, and they still care about their city, but they also let not as high a standard as this. We have a higher standard in West Covina. And that's what you need to maintain, is a higher standard, a higher police standard, higher safety standard, higher business standard. It's great, but where's the standard? You own a car? Most people in the city own a car? Do you want a box check because your mechanic happens to fit in a box? Or you want a mechanic that knows how to put the brakes on? So by using a higher standard of how people should live in the city, everybody wins. We have a shopping cart standard? Really? Is it the shopping cart that's causing it? Or the person that probably doesn't belong in the city? I've asked the city attorney once, what's the definition of a resident or a citizen? I've never received it. So if you're pushing a shopping cart through the city, fine. All it can pass through, because it's a city, and they're free to pass. But if they're sleeping on bus stops over and over again? And then we have people coming in to the city distributing snacks and calling that contacts? And there was only three people that got a bed in one year? Is that a nice standard? So just take a second, enforce the laws that we have, and get the people who have the right to enforce a law. Not so people like them can, don't have to worry about what's going on in their city. They can sleep at night and go to work and pay the taxes. Pay for the city employees so they can have a week off at Christmas. I wanna wish you all again Merry Christmas. Thank you, and raise the standard.
May I have one more speaker card? Saul Ferryman.
Good evening. I'm one of Robert Escalante's family member. On November 24th, 2023, at approximately 10:45 PM, while I was waiting for my trailer to be done loading at work, I logged onto Facebook. I saw a post that there was a second fatal motorcycle accident on Westport and Amor. What I saw was a motorcycle caught on fire and a body covered in a white blanket. I text Robert not too long after that there was an accident up the street from his home. I believe he was about five minutes away. I believe he was about five minutes away. At 4:00 in the morning, I get a call from his mom, Mirna, who's here today, telling me that he was gone. So the person that I saw in that Facebook post was him. I text him he was already gone. The crash happened around 7:30 from my knowledge. And from my knowledge, the forensic investigator said that it was death on impact. I carried his casket on Friday. He's my first major loss. I never lost anyone. I'm 29 years old. I saw him on Thanksgiving. I said part of him being so sure that I would see him again. And little did I know, that was the last time. Christmas Eve is exactly a month that I found out that he passed. I understand that we get carried away. You all have jobs, families. I understand. I'm guilty of it too. Ignoring a phone call, not doing what I'm supposed to do. We're human. I'm not here to bash you. I'm just asking, just plain and simple, to prioritize this, please. For me, for Robert, for the other families affected by this. I think three people is enough. So please just, you know, I'm not asking for more or less. I just want this to get done, please. Like I said, I understand, like, we're all human. So I'm not here to drag you. I know for a fact, like each and every one of you, you guys would have loved them. So, thank you.
I have no further cards, Mayor.
Thank you. Assistant City Manager Morales, could you respond?
Yes, so, you know, your families are still in our hearts and prayers. I know that, you know, this is still a difficult time and it might just, you know, get a little bit harder with the holidays coming up. So I know that we were able to meet earlier today and we were able to have some of our key staff members there. Our acting police chief, myself and our engineering team to go over, you know, updates on what we're doing to address the safety concerns at that specific intersection and to get some feedback from you and what we can do, you know? What are some of the feedback that you guys provided to us as well so that we can take that into consideration when we're looking at doing that assessment of that intersection? I know that I told you guys during that meeting and I'll share it with the audience. That's gonna be a priority for us in addressing those safety concerns at that intersection. It's not something that we just mentioned at the last council meeting and we're gonna put it on the shelf and walk away. We're gonna, you know, diligently work to making immediate changes. I know that we had staff out there already. I don't know if you saw, but they've made sure that all of the speed signs are visible now. We're gonna be looking at some immediate changes on signage. And then we are gonna be in the long term making those changes or coming up with analysis on the long term changes to make those intersections safer. So it will require some time on the long term and we just, you know, request your patience. As I mentioned to the families, I will be providing them with updates on those improvements along the way. So you guys have, you know, open door. Anytime you guys have a question or anything, feel free to give me a call. I will be providing those updates with you. So to a couple of other items that was brought up tonight. We don't allow our code enforcement to be weaponized by residents. Our code enforcement responds to code violations in our community that are either called by other residents in the community or that they observe while they're surveying in the community. So if I think Mrs. Jimenez had an issue, I'd be more than happy to meet with her and have her meet with our code enforcement director. And we can help address the concerns that she brought before us tonight. As well as Mr. Coroner, I think you had some permit parking, so I can get you that information. I don't know if he's still here. Oh, yes, you are. So I can get you that information. It is available on our website. And then we can, I know that, I believe code enforcement went out there as well. As far as street sweeping, if it isn't posted, we are not able to enforce it. So I'm not sure if your area specifically has enforcement or if it is, okay. So you can take a look at that. And then Mr. Vargas, in regards to the power pole at Puente and Vincent, that was the site of the other incident. And I was able to share last meeting and can share again that that was an intersection that did receive grant funding. It is in the design phase. We are hoping that we can get that completed in the next couple of months. We have to work with the city of Covina as it's an intersection that we share with them. And that timeline for improvements for left turn phasing would be done by the end of 2024. And then in regards, sorry, to the power pole, we went, we had staff go out and verify that it's actually not a city-owned power pole. It's utility pole owned by Verizon. And so we are working and following up with them to make sure that they address their pole as expeditiously as possible. So I think that sums up my comments for the evening. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu.
I think the resident showed a couple of meetings ago, okay, and talked about sunset. And we promised him we have our police chief or the officer to talk to them regarding the safety issue, okay? Have we addressed that? Okay, have we arranged some kind of meeting with the resident to see? I think Cross Street is county, right, or Covina? So we have no jurisdiction with all those departments. We only have their side, but what can we do to address their major concern? I think last time we already talked about this, that we are going to do something about some parking issues, some other solution and find a way. And they are long-term resident. I remember even serving in the country, okay? And we need to really help the resident over there to make sure their concern has been addressed. So I apologize. I don't know why they haven't really contacted you. And hopefully we can have our police officer to be frequently in your neighborhood to make sure you feel safe right there. So can we address that? Can we arrange some of their concern? Okay, and I really, I think they're really concerned about that. And I think last time we already mentioned to address your issue. Hopefully this time we can make this thing happen. Thank you.
Thank you. On the Verizon power pole, if we can get a timeline on that, so that way we can make sure to communicate it to the residents and then we can also put pressure to make sure that gets done.
I actually asked staff, yes, to get a timeline and then also contact so that if residents see that it, you know, needs repair, that they can give them a call directly as well.
Okay, any other counsel? All right, we will then move on to our consent calendar. Counsel, is there anything you would like to pull from the consent calendar? All right, do we have a motion to approve?
I moved the motion to approve Agenda 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 for approval.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Wu with a second by Councilwoman Diaz to approve the consent calendar. Before I take roll call, I just wanna read the title of an ordinance into the record. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of West Covina, California, amending section 2-23 of the West Covina Municipal Code relating to City Council Compensation. Councilman Contos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Calderon Tabatabai?
Aye.
Item passes for zero, Mayor. Consent calendar.
All right, we will now move to Department Regular Matters. Item number nine, 2023 Pavement Management Program Update. Ms. Morales, who will present the staff report?
Hi, yeah, so we will have Ohana Michi from TransTech provide the presentation. And then we have Peter Buckham from the consultant be able to answer questions as well.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm glad to be here to see the, here this evening. Looking forward to presenting the West Covina 2023 PMP update. Work has been ongoing for the last several months. And just wanna give a project status update in regards to where we are in the project as well as discuss basic pavement management concepts and methodologies that were used to implement a proactive PMP for the city. So I thank you for, again, the opportunity to speak this evening. Again, my name is Peter Buckham. I'm the owner-operator of Buckham Infrastructure Group. I've been in business for about 25 years now in regards to pavement management throughout Southern California. I have a breath here a little bit. In those 25 years, we've focused our PMP methodologies throughout LA County, Orange County and the Inland Empire Counties. We're currently working with over 35% of the cities in LA County alone, over 60% of the cities in Orange County and multiple cities in San Diego and the Inland Empire. So I bring a tremendous amount of experience to the city. So if there's any Q and A after the presentation, I can look forward to that. The basic concepts of PMP in a simplified fashion are a turnkey effort. You're looking at a PMP review of the existing data. Existing data would reside in a network of streets in regards to branches and sections. Branch would be Main Street and so forth, and the sections would be more breakdown from there. So Buckham's initial review of West Covina's segmentation was through a Streetsaver database that went on for about a month or two. We made numerous corrections in regards to that database to make it more efficient and to match how the city is actually maintaining and rehabbing pavement segmentation recommendations. Beyond the segmentation review, that moves into the condition analysis in regards to performance surveys. And then we move into the economic portion of a PMP study, which we're currently working with the city right now, which we'll discuss in detail in a few minutes here. But what is PMP? PMP is a decision-making tool that assists the city in making cost-effective decisions related to the maintenance and rehab of your roadway segments. It provides a previous or, excuse me, it provides a process or methodology for rating pavement condition. We'll discuss that in a minute. Establishing consistent maintenance and repair schedules and evaluates the effectiveness of the maintenance treatment strategies the city is currently using. So this, our study is simply not a conditional study. It's a full turnkey effort all the way to the economic side of how West Covina is performing PMP maintenance and rehab. In regards to some questions I'm typically asked from directors of public works, the city manager, principal engineers on every project I've worked on over the years, is, Peter, what's our current condition? What does that condition mean to us? How do we maintain that? How much money do we need to maintain this system at a minimum? Because ultimately, one of our major goals for West Covina is to provide the economic output that defines at a minimum what will it take to maintain your current condition as of 2023 and beyond. So those funding questions are very typical in regards to, okay, we understand our condition level. Okay, Peter, how do we maintain that from here or actually improve our conditions over the next several capital years? PMP is a planning tool. I describe it as a tip of the pyramid. We have a design engineers that follow through from our work. And that work actually gets designed, obviously, and goes to construction. So the recommendations from our PMP to West Covina are for planning purposes and are not intended to replace the engineering, design and judgment from your staff. It's a collaboration effort. Before making decisions for final rehab, construction approaches to be used, existing conditions should be checked by the design engineer in the field, which I've actually attended multiple meetings in the past on those as well. They wanna understand how the survey was done compared to what needs to be designed moving forward. And the final rehab approach should be established and the plans and specs should be prepared accordingly. Very typical process. Final project recommendation should be weighed against the actual approach the city uses. I'll describe that in a second when I talk about the economic budgetary output of the study. And the PMP, the pavement condition values may indicate a particular pavement section or frankly, a zone within the residential system that needs attention earlier than the rest of the network. So it's a prioritization process as well. When it comes to, like I mentioned right off the bat, assessing the segmentation that's been verified, the next step, like I said, is the pavement condition survey process. This is an ASTM standard. It's called D6433. It's been around for about 50 years, probably supported by the Army Corps of Engineers. And what it will generate for each pavement section in the network is a pavement condition index value. That value is between 0 and 100, where 0 is very poor or failed. And 100 would be a brand new street or recently overlaid street. That's a broad range of those PCI values. So you put a conditional term to those PCI ranges. It gives the managers like myself and the city staff to have very cooperative discussions internally to make solid recommendations moving forward. There's over 39 distresses that can be collected through the PMP inspections. It's a sampling methodology, so our surveys cover approximately 20 to 30% of the total area per section. So it's very comprehensive in regards to what conditions are being found. And that will ultimately generate the PCI value for the city to evaluate. So where is West Covina right now? As the study was concluded late in the summer here, the network PCI for West Covina is 71. It's not an A to ABC kind of grade type of approach, but it's an average condition in regards to comparing yourself or benchmarking yourself against other cities in the county or the greater regional area. The system internally, or the system in its entirety is 287 miles of street network. There's some historical PCIs there. Your current PCI is in orange. Historically, we have 2020 PCI values and 2017. As you can see, the PCI, weighted average PCI for the city 71 dipped in the 2020 study performed by a different group. And then it has increased. That's definitely demonstrating that over the last several years, the city's approach to zone maintenance on the local system as well as our TRL CIP schedules is proactively improving Covina's, West Covina's conditions as a whole. That's a good sign. When I start seeing these study results, which I'll describe here in a second, that's a good indicator that the city is on the right approach. And I'll expand upon how to improve that even further. This is what's called a PCI or Pavement Condition Index MAP, citywide. It gives the managers, when we're having internal discussions, a good idea of which zone potentially is performing better than others. The PCI value is not simply a current value. As the system matures and multiple inspection sets are collected, we can start seeing how sections deteriorate quicker or slower compared to others as well. So all this data has been provided to the city in regards to publishing this within your GIS enterprise system as well as some other functions that we might be demonstrating here shortly. And one of those questions I brought up right off the bat was, what's our current condition, Peter? How we stand? West Covina is at 71. These were other studies of some of the other LA County cities that Buckham has provided the same service to over the last two years. So you can see where West Covina stands in that grouping. The county average for LA in all 88 cities, the PCI is 66. And West Covina is above that bar. It's a good sign. In 2020, you were at par or average in regards to where the county is. In two thousand twenty, you are at par or average in regards to where the county is. So proactive management needs to continue. Comparing the LA County to other counties around your area, the inland empire counties are about sixty-eight PCI. San Diego is seventy-four, and Orange County has the highest weighted county average in the state, has a value of eighty PCI. So what does PCI look like? We get that question quite a bit, you know, what does a PCI of one hundred look at compared to a seventy? This would be a recently overlaid street or a new constructed street in regards to condition. Our inspectors might find minimal linear cracking and so forth, which will not drop the PCI at any major value. As a section starts deteriorating, gets to a level that would trigger a slurry seal or overlay maintenance, you start to see a large majority of low severity cracking and moderate severity cracking that give you a PCI of sixty, which would trigger again an overlay or a slurry seal. As a section gets further into duration down to a level of forty, you start to see a majority of the distress as being moderate severity, alligator cracking starting to show up. When a section falls into a fail condition, as you can see, a lot of this distress that's shown there is what's called alligator cracking in regards to pavement distress type, which is very detrimental to the operation of how the section's performing, as well as its safety as well. So again, once the condition valuations are over, we provide all that data to the city for review in regards to PCI section by section. Then we start talking about the economy of the project. And what are the city's unit costs for slurry seal, specific types of overlays, reconstruction type of projects? Because we want to benchmark or create a cornerstone study or budgetary analysis of how the city's actual current budget will perform against the conditions found. We don't run other models first. We run that type of current budget immediately. Then get that data back to the city so we can have internal discussions, how to get more information from the city and improve the study output. One key factor in regards to pavement management practices is preventive maintenance. Currently, West Covina has seventy percent of its network, go back a little bit here. Seventy percent of West Covina's network is in fair or above. That's a good indicator to a manager like myself, because what I know is that the deferred backlog or maintenance on the system is going to be very manageable. The city is proactively improving the conditions, which I've shown here in this demonstration, and it's a good sign that it's above a seventy percent value. Typically, when an entire network is above sixty percent fair or above, there's a good chance that the system can greatly improve in a quick manner, and a quick manner being five to ten years. Also, in the payment, in regards of why preventive maintenance, that's why I brought up the seventy percent value to you. When we're looking at applying the most, where we need to apply the most maintenance actively and proactively, we want to make sure that we're addressing that large seventy percent of the network at a very frequent manner. We don't want to fix the worst type of streets, worst-conditioned streets first due to the cost, and I'll show that here in a second. This is a great indicator of what typical pavement management section's life. This is typically a twenty-five-year lifecycle. That black line in the background there is your twenty-five-year lifecycle of AC asphalt concrete section. As a section deteriorates, you can see in the boxes there, the unit cost per square foot that are applied to do those types of maintenance approaches. Crack ceiling at fifty cents of linear foot or square foot. Slurry seal is about seventy-five percent. And once a section gets about fifty-five PCI below, the cost for doing maintenance greatly increases dramatically, four to five, sometimes eight, eight times the cost of a slurry seal, especially in today's inflation market. We're seeing slurry costs around a dollar, dollar fifty, reconstruction costs at ten to twelve dollars a square foot. That's very dramatic, and it impacts how the city can proactively manage your PMP long-term. So in meeting with the city right now, we're going through the draft reporting in regards to finalizing the budgetary output. We're looking at, you know, the city's twelve maintenance zones for the local system, how we need to proactively schedule that, the twelve zones to be effective, and how the PMP is managed over the, at a minimum, over the next five years. So we're looking at that heavily. We're looking at the arterial collector CIP projects that are currently in design, potentially coming up to construction soon or plan for construction in the next eighteen to twenty-four months. Those projects are built within our scheduling as well. The arterial, like I just said, the arterial streets. This allows for a more cost-effective strategy, minimizing mobilization costs in regards to focusing specific projects in geographical areas, and saves the city quite a bit of Here's a good example of West Covina's twelve zones have been historically established. So part of my process and my responsibility and accountability to the city was to analyze these zones for condition found from our inspections and feed that data back to the city staff, which was, I don't know about a couple of weeks ago, in regards to going through the draft reporting. We're coming up with the most proactive, effective localized zone schedule that will greatly improve the conditions, as long as those projects, planned projects are followed through on. So part of, at a minimum, what we typically provide to a city in regards to minimum budget scenarios, again, we want to model the current budget first. I call it the sandbox, how much money is in the sandbox. So modeling the current budget will let me know as a manager how I have to give feedback to the city staff. How does this PCI react to this value or how it's multi-million dollar budget? How does a deferred maintenance and backlog react to that as well? How much overlay and slurry seal remains after the budget is applied? So that triggers discussions internally with the city manager's office and the staff to be effective. And we're currently, like I said, going through that process. Our goal is to get back to city council in a month, at the earliest, and go from there. Beyond the current budget model, I provide the city models of what would, at a minimum, what would it cost per year to maintain the seventy-one PCI for West Covina over the five years? And how much would it cost per year to improve that seventy-one to a value that is acceptable by city staff? So with that, that's the presentation. Wanted to be brief on that, but you guys have any Q and A on that?
Councilman Kontos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in light of your projections, how long will it take for us ultimately to hit a higher average PCI of seventy-five or eighty, just over time? Because I recognize that as time progresses, we get taken care of the deferred maintenance, but we also maintain what we fix. So how long, in terms of years, would that take for us to hit those levels of PCI?
It truly matters on the budget applied, right? That's I mentioned, the sandbox that I mentioned, that's if it's a one million dollar budget, then that's not going to be ample. If it's a five, seven million dollar budget, that has to be modeled out. That's the feedback I'm giving to the city currently. We're modeling that right now. So the term of that project or that load of work can be a three-year study, it could be a five-year study or a seven-year, based upon the applicability of the budget that's coming in to me to manage on those things. So to answer your question, I can't give you a specific dollar amount at this point, but it's based on the term of the CIP, again, three, five, seven years, as well as a budget applied. So that's the biggest, what I failed to mention right off the bat, the biggest success, I've been doing this for twenty-five years, like I mentioned, it's over twelve hundred PMP projects. I've seen a lot of fantastically managed PMPs and horribly managed PMPs. We're, you know, looking back in hindsight on that, the city here presenting the PMP to the city council is rare. It's a great step for West Covina for this to be occurring this evening. It's a good step, because it builds accountability, shows transparency in regards to what's going on with the PMP. The PMP network for West Covina is worth six hundred million dollars to replace. If you were to reconstruct every street in West Covina right now, it's six hundred-plus million dollars. That's not the budget you need, but that's its value. That's the value of this building or the lighting system in regards to deferred value. So how do you manage that? You frequently communicate it through to city council levels, city manager, public works, comm dev, maintenance staff, all the way to the design engineers, with their consultants or internal. That creates a very proactive PMP that will succeed. How quickly, came back to your question a little bit, how quickly can that be done? I've seen cities, doesn't matter where in SoCal, achieve this in five years, achieve it or achieve it in fifteen years, based upon, again, available budget and applicability of that budget. So that's the long answer to your question.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, we see this is rough report, but we are behind Covina, Hamburg, so it's a disappointment. I think we trying our best, try to, okay, we pave our street, and then we try and use the capital improvement, restrictive fund. But when we canvassing the neighborhood, I think we know the resident concern, one, number one is public safety. Okay, then, number two, when you talk to a resident, they really worry about their overgrown vegetation behind their home and this and that. Number three is the repayment their street, okay? And they really want their street, okay, send when, okay, that can be repaid and fixed. And number, okay, four, there would be the traffic enforcement, okay? A car zooms through their street, and the children are playing on the street. So this is a couple of issue we try to address. But, okay, now we're talking about, the reason we invite you to be doing this presentation is we request the city, I think, I think a year or two years ago, okay, we want to update, okay, the surveyor, meaning you, the new company coming in to help us, because sound like a previous, okay, the contractor or surveyor is not, we feel like maybe not totally in detail. Then hopefully, with your company, so we request that all the information will be on our city website. Their street can have a level of the grading, like they are A, B, C, D, something, okay? And so they know when their street will be repaid and fixed. Okay, so right now, everybody's in the dark, okay? And the SCT, the SCT council say, oh, when we are going to get service on our street? For example, on Cortez, they for twenty years, thirty years, okay, they never been repaid. Some of the south side Valley View, same problem too. And you go to the Woodgate, that is another of a street, a major street, and you can see, you see the alligator scale on the street, and it's failing us. So all those street, when they are going to repay, okay, and when there'll be addressed? I think a lot of residents just want to see with this new company, and all the information can be transparent on our website, so they know in the different level based on your picture, because you didn't show some of the picture, even more scary, it's like alligators, okay, scale, okay, like broken apart, and then you have a, okay, and crack in the middle of the street. And I, we've been walking on the street, we see some of the street, quite a lot have less situation. So when, which one is priority? When all those street will be addressed and repaired?
I can play, I understand the question and statement quite a bit. In regards to this map that I have here, again, this is the twelve zones, this has been proactively managed across the last several years, increasing PCIs. So the city has historically, from our assessment, gone through, I believe, zones four and five, I recall, recently made improvements there to address those requests by city constituents, councils, staff, and so forth. We as a firm assess that and then projected maintenance from this schedule. Currently, we're modeling a five-year schedule for this residential zone system based on one, based upon the weighted PCI for these zones as an entire zone system there. So Zone Six might have a PCI of forty-five, for all the streets within that. Zone Ten might have a PCI of seventy. So how do you prioritize that? So again, it's a five-year model for streets being recommended out, but we can easily demonstrate beyond the five zones in the first five years, the remaining seven zones and what years those will be projected to be maintained. Also, what we're addressing is the work history element of where work has been done previously. So if Zone Ten has some sections that were recently overlaid about five or six years ago, we do not recommend maintenance on that section again in Zone Ten, because typically, well, not typically, every pavement application that is academically stated here, like a slurry seal or an overlay or recon, has a life, shelf life. Slurry seals will last typically three to five years on a conventional slurry. A overlay will typically last ten to fifteen years based upon what type of overlays are there. Reconstructions are very similar to overlays, they deteriorate at the same rate. But my point in that, counsel, is that we as a firm aren't simply just making our recommendations based upon condition index values. We're looking at deferred maintenance cycles, work history trends, as well as the PCIs within each zone, to make sure that we're recommending the most proactive schedule for you based upon the budget that I'm allowed to play with. Again, it falls back to the previous council member's question, how quickly can we improve? And it's been dependent on several factors. So again, Buckham's not just simply looking at condition value, we're looking at the comprehensive West Covina methodology that's historically been in place and improving those schedules.
Okay, so following up, okay, the question is what we mentioned about on your report, when you finish, this will be on our website, so people can type in their address and to see what zone and when is the cycling that will be repaid?
If I can answer, yes. So they will be able to, residents would be able to provide and pull up their street and see when it was, if we have history of when it was last paved, and then the PCI level, and if it's part of the program, when it's projected to be paid.
So all the information will be, okay, uploaded onto our city website, so our resident can, okay, type in their streets to get the information, and those information can give them some idea when. But I don't know if that's possible.
Yes.
Resident can maybe see their street condition, or the resident can upload their street condition to the site, so you guys can survey, because we have a seven, almost seventeen square mile. That's a lot, a lot of street. You have a code I said, you might be missed, okay, you might be have some issue on the site, and you Jason with county, or you Jason with Warner or outer city, and those three possible will be mixed. Okay, so have you addressed those issue?
Councilman Wu? So that information will be on the database, so it's going to be on the public database, on the city's GIS map. So basically, the address, residents can check their address, and they can see when that specific street segment will be addressed as part of the city's payment management.
So this report will be very detailed, so the resident can really look into how you, okay, and have this survey regarding the condition of the street, okay, what zoning and when they will be repaid. So based in that way, they don't have to check. But a second question would be, can they upload about their question? Okay, regarding their street condition is really, okay, deteriorate, rather than what you say they still fail?
Yes, the answer to your first question is yes. They will be able to check and verify the timeline for their street segment, when it will be addressed. And the answer to your second question, if the pavement condition deteriorates faster than an expected timeline, then they can reach out to the engineering department so that we can make priority changes based on the existing conditions.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor? Councilman Kontos?
Just as a follow-up to Mayor Pro Tem Wu's questions, what timeline are we looking at for incorporation of this information online for people to be able to look up the information that he described?
If I may answer, Councilman Kontos, so we will be bringing back the report before you in January, at the January council meeting. Once it's approved, then we'll be able to put it on our website, and I think that could be within a week or two.
Good, thank you.
Am I correct? Yeah.
Thank you.
So one concern I have is that there are certain areas of the city that historically were neglected. And one of the things in your presentation you mentioned is that some of those streets that are most in need, you don't want to prioritize those because they take up the most amount of money. So how do you balance that between those areas of the community? I mean, we understand that at times, you know, street paving is very political, and there were areas of the city that were focused on and taken care of, and other areas that were highly neglected. And so now, we're at this time period where things are more done through formulas and computer programs and budgeting, and you take the human element out of it. But without the human element, then you can't go back, right, and repair damage that was allowed to happen. So how does that balance work?
The initial step to do that, we talked about this a few weeks ago with the staff, is the zone cycle- is the zone cycle for the local system is a great first step. And that should be continuously managed proactively because the goal of that zone for, let's say, fiscal year 24, 25 coming up is to maximize the budget within that geographical area and address every street within that zone, period, no matter its condition, as long as the budget, again, is there to do that work. If it's not there, if the budget's not there, then what I do as a manager is make recommendations based upon the percentage of work types that it could be applied within that zone. How much is preventive maintenance? How much is slurry, how much percentage is slurry need versus overlay and recon need? Then I will make decisions and recommendations to the staff for consideration to address some of those outlined sections that have a PCI of five and they've been like that since 1998. We deal with a lot of L.A. cities here, like I mentioned, that have very similar issues that you have because historically, the cities here in the county are over 100 years old, i.e., we're 100 year anniversary. So, you know, I, again, I don't simply just take the PCI as the only value. I look at all condition functions that need to be considered. And if we can get away with doing those, it's a fantastic result. We just simply don't ignore sections that need reconstruction. We actually make recommendations for the most sections that qualify reconstruction and budgets there, we make those recommendations to do that. And it's good to, the initial drafts that we've sent to the city is providing that information and those recommendations to staff. That's good, it's a good sign that West Covina, again, is on the uptrend as long as the money's there and the applicability is there. What I wanted to mention as well, the frequency of PMPs is critical. You know, if a bus to work with you again in three years, fantastic. But there's a lot of cities that I have worked with do PMP studies every 10 or 15 years between studies. It's two inspections in 30 years. It's not going to be a successful PMP. Here in the county of L.A., you're required to do it every three years, minimal. That's a good start. If you can do it more proactively, it's going to build a more relevant data for your city council and staff to consider. Like O'Kan was mentioning, certain sections will deteriorate a lot quicker than others. You might overlay a section and it results in a PCI of 100, but in five years, it might be a 70. Where a section right down the street was the same condition, you overlaid it, and it's still 95 based upon more inspections. Because that's speaking to managers like myself and engineers, that the sub-base is stronger there than in the other location. So that makes more information available to managers like ourselves to make stronger recommendations. So there's a lot that goes into this, but the frequency of inspection is critical because that really triggers a audit point for managers to really understand how the system's performing.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Mayor Protem Wu.
Yeah, just want to follow up, okay, same question again regarding, we just have a limited, okay, a budget, okay, for limited fund to repay, okay, to pay the street. We want to make sure we don't redundant waste. For example, my experience, since I live West Covina since 1989, and some street had never been paved for 20, 30 years. But some area, as I remember my old neighborhood between the, okay, between Azusa and Lock Allen, those areas street have been paved two times within 20, 25 years. So how you decide some area, they have a lot much more frequent, okay, and repaving rather than some street never been repaid for 20, 30 years. Okay, and the condition doesn't look like that good. So can you address that concern?
Concern is, again, the frequency of PMP studies is a tricky effort. When you're assessing the database, one of the key elements that we're assessing is the validity and accuracy in the data entry of all the work history that's been performed in West Covina. And historically, this city has not tracked that well, I guess. That's the best term I can say. But moving forward, you know, I just made this, we did an OCTA study down in Orange County. Our firm was blessed to work with OCTA to do a 35-city study across the county of Orange, assess every PMP database, it's going to be a long answer to your question, but every PMP database last year in Orange County, over, there's 35 cities, 10 of those cities had zero work history even being tracked in their database. So as a manager like myself, if I see a PCI of 60, but you slurry sealed that two years ago, I don't know that. Because I'm not physically there at the section unless I'm getting the other data from the staff. So work history is a key element for tracking deferred backlog and maintenance. So my recommendation to address your question is get into the PMP more frequently. Make an annual update in regards to on-call services. There's one thing I didn't mention in my presentation. We worked with a city in the inland empire that had a PCI of 61 in 1998. I came on board there, we've been working there for 25 years now. Their weighted PCI now is 84 in 15 to 20 years because they've made a dynamic decision at the city to do a strategic business plan specifically how the PMP should be managed. That was annual updates to the system. Key element to that update was the work history tracking because after five, six, seven years, you ask your staff, like, do we slurry seal our own street? I can't remember if we did. If that data is not readily available, managers can't make the right decision. So repeating maintenance on a section could happen, which is economically not viable. Doesn't make sense. When I see, when I run the reports and the databases that you have, and I look at PCIs, deferred maintenance, and the work histories that are there, then we request additional data from the city staff saying, is there any other work history that you have that would improve the data that's here? So again, it's accountability, frequency, and transparency.
I think this is how, why you here. Because a couple years ago, and we mentioned this, I think O'Kan remember, and the answer is how can we get a much more reliable, okay, and, okay, surveyor, okay, to get all those information, okay, and to get the thing so we can, okay, get a much more accurate report, okay? With those report, then we can basically, and get a better service. So we don't redundant waste our limited resource into a street that doesn't need to repave and continue to pay again and again. So hopefully, as you are the new, okay, and the surveyor and to come to hopefully with a recommendation for our engineer, okay, and TransTech, that with your company is really reputable and can help us, okay, to get accurate information into the paving industry. I think this is why we request for this presentation is want to make sure we hire the person that can get our accurate data and so we do not have to waste our limited resource for someplace we replace all the time and someplace never been repaid.
Absolutely, Councilman Wu. And also to further elaborate on Peter's comments. So this is the third update since 2017, so 2017, 2020, and this update 2023. So now we have an established baseline. You know, the history for the last, since 2017, basically. So we can confidently say that we have not been addressed a street twice since these studies have been done since 2017. So to elaborate on Peter's comment, it is important to maintain this baseline strategy updating the PMP every three years, which we have been doing it. With this update, we are going to be even further confident moving forward to make sure that no same street has been addressed, you know, within the last couple of years. But we're going to basically utilize the available funds as efficient as possible to address as many streets as possible. So that's definitely the ultimate goal.
So sound like you are going to be responsible for this?
It's a teamwork, yes.
Yeah, so thank you so much for you taking responsibility. Okay, and that is how engineer need to help the city to make sure, okay, we don't waste our fund to repay the street that doesn't need to repay and some street have been, okay, ignored. So hopefully, and with like the last comment I have with the PMP, hopefully, we can continue to finalize and continue to update our PMP. So in that way, because we save, maybe we pay a little bit this surveyor, okay, and we continue to build our database. So we don't want to waste, okay, and a million dollar to pay the street that doesn't need to repave and the street need to be paid and never be touched. So hopefully, this system, we put a trust in you, okay? And that's why we want this presentation to let the contractor, the new character into our city, understand how serious we really want to make sure our streets, okay, not going to be waste and all the street will be fixed and let the resident know, okay, their street is coming, will be addressed. Thank you.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I was just going to say, this GIS map is what we're going to utilize to keep track of the improvements that we do. You know, as O'Kan was mentioning, we are doing the PMP every three years. So that is a record of the street rehabilitation projects we've been doing since 2017. And moving forward, we'll be able to work off this one GIS map and what improvements we do in our streets within the city.
So I have a question, I don't know if this is a city attorney question or for the acting city manager, but the timetable here, so we've been doing it every three years. In the past, we weren't doing it. I understand there is this history in other cities and possibly in ours of corruption in terms of which streets get paved and where monies go. Is there anywhere that this is codified for us to do this, to continue accountability? And so future councils can't, you know, stop doing this type of surveying and maintaining the histories and things like that? Yeah, so because this is really important.
Well, can I answer that?
Sorry, and I don't know if O'Kan can add to it, but as part of the CIP or Capital Improvement Projects that we bring before the council on an annual basis, and part of that is we always bring a street rehabilitation project. Before 2017, I can't speak to why those projects were delayed. I don't know if it was, I don't know why, but they are part of the capital improvement projects that are brought before the council for.
Right, but the fact that there's a lack of history, a lack of maintaining proper records as to when streets were repaired or paved, those are things that are necessary to make sure there's transparency and there's no corruption. So I guess my question is, is that something that can be codified that all future councils, this is just something that needs to happen?
I can make a recommendation for the other examples that I gave earlier about successful PMPs. You have on-call annual services that between the major inspections every three years, you work with your consultant or internal staff, can be trained on this as well, updating the system on work history. So as the city's completing, you get completion dates. This project could approve here in council. That data gets back to the consultant or your staffer that they can inject that data into your Street Saver database. That will automatically update your PCI that day. So your 71 PCI after a year might become 73, might become 68, depending on how much work you did. That's accountability that you can do every year or every twice a year that was part of that strategic business plan that we did with that city to make sure that there was transparency, accountability. As I said, a major goal, they wanted to go from 61 to 70 in nine years. They got there in five because they were productively doing these things every year. So it'd be minimal cost effort or effort labor to update the system in the second and third year between inspections. That's one recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, I can look into seeing if we can codify that, make it a requirement. The issue's going to be enforcement of it, make sure that we're doing it.
Mayor Protem Wu.
Okay, I want to follow up the mayor's suggestion. I think this is, the continuity is very important for us because we won't be city over here, okay, and forever. So next council and this and that, and the situation will change. Sometime we have a better budget, sometime we maybe this and that. So you never know what future set for us. But we want to keep this continuity, the archive regarding all this database. So another suggestion would be all the updates should be on our website for all the information. So transparency, transparent will be on the website to see how they update. So everybody can review it. So in that way, the website about their street, when this and that, and where is the new change, okay? So people can review it, anybody, everybody can do it. So this is another suggestion to on the website, update the website regarding when we're going to pave, what street, when the date, this and that. So we should have a record because if we approve the budget or capital improvement about the paving the street, we should have already data already. And the data should be put on the, okay, our website so people can type in and continue update our data, okay, with the PMP, okay, payment management plan, and continue to update. So in that way, we continue carry on for future. So again, this is my suggestion.
All right, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I believe this is receive and file, so thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation.
I just want to confirm, no objection for the receive and file for the minutes. Thank you.
All right, it is time for city council reports. Any AB 1234 conference and meeting reports? Seeing none, any city council requests?
Councilman Kontos? I guess to formalize your recommendation along with Mayor Protem Wu, that should be, if I support of that being a mother, may I to formalize that process to make permanent the PMP procedures to ensure continuity long past our council now?
Fantastic. Yep, we're all good. So everyone is in agreement?
Yes. Agreed.
All right, anyone else?
I want to comment.
Yes, yes, city council comments. Mayor Protem Wu.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, and this will be, I think, our last meeting of this year. Okay, I think everybody went through years and good and bad and this and that, okay? And we have some, okay, very, very horrible tragedy, okay? And lost a family member, okay? And beside that, okay, and we city has a lot of improvement, okay? And I want to thank our acting city manager in May, a step up, okay, and to help the city, okay, and let the city stabilize. And the city doing pretty good right now financially. And I want to thank, okay, Stephanie, okay, and to help us to do the HR and do the financial, okay, and healthiness for us to continue to carry on. And we try to improve the city and we know the cities they have a lot of room to be improved. And we hope we can continue. Can we have them to go?
Gentlemen? Gentlemen?
Can, okay, if you want to talk, can you go? Please let me finish, we almost done, okay? And thank you so much, okay? And it's difficult to talk and listen to, okay, thank you, appreciate, okay? Yeah, okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, so again, just want to thank all the staff, okay, and for their hard work, okay? And for to put our city together, okay? And we here continue to serve, okay? And beside that, we have a lot of good program going on and all the effort from our city staff and our resident put this together, participate. And for see the 2024, we're going to continue to work together and improve our city. I know we still have a lot of issue and this and that, and we try to address as much as we can. But other than that, I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and happy 2024. Thank you so much.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, I want to say thank you to our West Covina Police Department for apprehending the other two suspects in that murder of the Bob's Liquor Store. Great job, thank you so much for all you do for us and trying to keep our city safe. Thank you. And I also want to thank Jim Grivich for his email apologizing for the mistake he had made in calculating compensation. That was really, really nice of you to do that. I appreciate acknowledging the mistake you made. Thank you. And I want to piggyback on everything that Councilman Wu says. I think that, I just want to thank our staff, you've done a wonderful, wonderful job. I think we had a great year. We have so much to be thankful for. And, you know, we can continue to pray for the people that have lost loved ones. And we're going to continue to try to improve our city. As Councilman Wu says, there's so much more to do and we're here to do it and we're willing to. and we're willing to and we're always trying to improve our city. And so I just want to wish all our residents Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and please be safe out there. Thank you.
Councilman Kontos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tomorrow will mark 365 days in office for me personally and I'm just really grateful. I love, I want to say this publicly here, I literally love all four of my colleagues here. When I came into office sworn in a year ago, that doesn't even count when I was really warmly welcomed by them on, on November the 10th and put to work right away as councilman elect. And then since then, building really close personal relationships of trust and caring and camaraderie among all four of my colleagues. I literally love them all and their families and their pets. And so I just, you know, and the thing is, and the reason why I wanted to bring this up, it's not just, just because it's the holidays, but it's through the out this whole time during my first year here, I've worked really hard to build bridges with all of our colleagues and all of our fellow residents of the community. And there have been so many wonderful moments of healing and of caring and reconciliation and of renewal. And I'm just really grateful for all of, all of our fellow residents as well as others throughout, anyone who's, who's interacted with us. I am grateful for our incredible staff, absolutely the most dedicated caring people around who have hearts of platinum and who really are wonderful human beings who do so much. That includes every part of our staff and plus that includes those who work in the different offices as well as our fire department, our police department, everyone who, who even serves, including serving as volunteers, not to mention the, the school districts and working closely with them, the senior citizens and, and everyone in between. It has been a remarkable year and I'm just really grateful to all of our, our friends and colleagues here. And in the spirit of, of Christmas and the holidays, I wanted to wish all of you the happiest of holiday seasons and in the spirit of love and joy and caring, I know we're going to continue making a difference and, and let's just keep moving forward on all of this. And I just love you guys, I really do. And let the, you're not here, Bone, you see this, love you too. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, first off, congratulations on one year. And, and again, you know, to be able to serve on the, the council with you has really just been amazing, the way you interact with the community, the way you really take the time to, to know everybody and know not only everyone's name, but to truly listen to folks makes a big difference. I know that I watch you and learn from you. I feel that I'm a better council member because you're on here. And so I just wanted to make sure that I shared my appreciation and love with you, Councilman Kontos. I want to say to my colleagues, again, this, this work is not easy and all of you do your very best for the community and I really appreciate that. I appreciate all the staff and I appreciate all the residents who, who come to meetings. But beyond coming to meetings, those who reach out on email, those who reach out through text, those who reach out through Facebook, the, to make a community work, to solve the problems of the community takes more than just five people on a, on a city council. It really takes the, the work of the residents and, you know, all of us up here want to see the best for our community, just like all of you. And so some of these big issues, these major issues are things that are front of mind. And we look forward to working with the community to, to solve them, to make them better because many of these things are solvable. And so I have that hope going into this new year. As we enter 2024, it is an opportunity to reflect and an opportunity to renew and to refocus and work as a community to make it better. And so I look forward to 2024. Merry Christmas, happy holidays to all of you. Councilwoman Lopez Viado, Merry Christmas to you, hope you feel better. And that is the end of tonight's meeting.